For attending our November second Commissioner meeting, at this time Commissioner Williams is going to lead us in a prayer and Commissioner McCoy with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand.
Everybody, Father, we come to you today grateful for this day which you make for us, especially today help us all be mindful of the fact that we live in what I believe is the greatest country in the world. We all get a chance to participate in what happens in our government one way, shape or form or another. And may all the minds in here today and those watching just think of what's best for Pender County as a whole, what's best for our state as a whole, and what's best for our country as a whole. And regardless of the results of tomorrow night, we still all need to wake up on Wednesday morning and be Americans and be citizens of those that are coming here that want to be American citizens. And let's just keep this, this great experiment called United States of America on track, healthy and safe. Jesus name and pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, hello. If you are a veteran or active duty or law enforcement, please stand up, be recognized. Thank you for your service. We like our law enforcement here in this county. Understand before we go to the adoption of the agenda, we're going to remove item nine point two, correct? Are there any other changes to the agenda we need to make? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda, less item nine point two.
We'll make a motion to approve the agenda, minus nine point two.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor. Vote is unanimous. All right. First item that we have is our public hearing. Public hearing consideration of a local matching incentive for Project Bird in the amount of thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. We're going to open the public hearing. Mr. Banager, would you like to take this one away?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've been working with WBD, who's been working with the local industry on what's referred to as Project Bird. This local industry is planning a fifty-six thousand square foot expansion of their existing production facility. Twenty-six million dollar investment, forty-eight new, forty-eight new full-time positions with an average wage thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. This project at the state level qualifies for economic development grants. One is a fifty thousand dollar, one North Carolina grant that requires a dollar-for-dollar local match. The other is a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar building reuse grant which requires a five percent or seventeen thousand, five hundred dollar local match. We've also had discussions since this industry is in the city limits of Burgal about the local match requirement totaling sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars being split between fifty-fifty between Pender County and the town of Burgal. Town of Burgal, discussion with the town of Burgal are very favorable to this arrangement and as of yet, the town of Burgal has not formally voted on the application supporting the local match. Conditions under which we would recommend Pender County Commissioners approving this would be based on, number one, the local match contributed by Pender County would not exceed thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars or fifty percent of the total local match needed. The local match being provided to the industry over a three-year period and the local match being on a reimbursement basis once the industry satisfies all grant obligations regarding capital investment, hiring and wage requirements. These, these type arrangements have been endeavors have been taken on in the past by the county. The recommendation is for the county to provide that local match not to exceed thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars based on the criteria we discussed.
Over three years.
Three years.
Think Commissioner Peatmire has a question.
On reimbursement basis.
So, so we had some discussion relative to the subject time before we last that we met. I believe that this addresses all the concerns that were identified during that discussion. Is that, is that a proper assumption?
Well, one thing, there was two discussion, the two, two questions I would say that the board had. One of who is the actual applicant? And I think the board asked that town of Burgal be the applicant, which Commissioner Newton mentioned to me earlier for the meeting. And in speaking with Skip, the folks at the state, this is typically a program that the applicant is the county of residence, not necessarily the city that the industry is in the city limits of. But I think your concerns related to who the applicant was were related to the county providing the funds and then not having some sort of clawback. But if we do it on a reimbursement basis, that should resolve those concerns, I would, I would think.
And then the other one was relative to timing, so that's also been addressed, correct? We didn't want to pay the incentives, the, the matching contribution before we actually saw the, the results of this investment. Am I phrasing that right, Commissioner Williams?
Performance.
Yeah, we wanted it performance based.
They have a performance agreement they'll have to provide and that's, that's covered under what I mentioned about capital investment, hiring and wage requirements.
Okay, I just want to make sure that all our concerns were addressed at some level before we, because I, I want to make sure that we had addressed those as they were raised.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I just have a question. Do we have any idea how many jobs this, this enterprise will generate, additional jobs? And I want confirmation that this is the extent of any tax advantages or incentives that will be offered this entity.
The preliminary information we've received from the industry which they have and will have to provide to the state based on the investment is an additional forty-eight new full-time positions with an average annual wage of thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. I'm not aware of any other eligible or applied for incentives or grants related to the expansion of the industry. And if they had, we would probably know about it because we would be asked to provide a local match as well for that.
Did you get your?
I did. Thank you, Chair.
I'd like to commend the board for, for hearing, you know, for hearing this and for what I believe agreeing to pursue with this. There's some good questions asked and everybody had, had the board, which really is not the board's back, but it's the citizens, the taxpayers back. So we've got good clawback in this, if you will. If they don't perform, they don't get it. Or if they start down the road and they don't meet the time, you know, we can get the money back. Of course, with the other grant that's beyond that, the state's putting out more, quite a bit more money than we are, so they're going to hold the feet to the fire as well, but the attorney's got us protected. We've done a similar, but pretty much the same thing before. Not the same amounts, not the same company, but the board has done this before, so we're not in uncharted waters. But I want to thank WBD. I see Scott and Rick in the background. They've been working hard on this, you know. Folks, folks hear these things pop up and then you go, oh my gosh, we got this time involved because of deadlines and grants, but you know, anytime it happens, it's been worked on for a long time, you know, it's just.
If they don't provide these jobs, we get our money back.
If they don't provide these jobs, we won't reimburse them.
They won't get, they, yeah, they won't get paid first place.
And this, and this motion and this approval is contingent on the town matching funds at fifty percent?
Yes, ma'am.
And they also have a clawback in the three year?
They will probably follow the same. At one time they were talking about two year versus three year, but they will have the same reimbursement basis as well on their, on their term.
So I believe this is a, a good deal in, in that it continues to demonstrate our board's willingness to support growth in industry that's already here, but also to bring new industry here. We've, we've taken advantage of, of, of WBD's good work in many occasions and we appreciate their effort, but this is a great thing. It's, it's, it's something that brings companies here and continues to bring companies here and I'm glad that we're continuing to support this. I'm not for subsidizing businesses. This is more in line with a reason for them to consider Pender County over other locations and, and I totally support that. So I just wanted to make that clear.
In town, we can create jobs. I feel like is a good situation for Pender County, but the terms we've got here, I think it's good over Pender County, win-win for Burgal and Pender County.
And with this particular enterprise, the public needs to be made aware that there's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the building reuse program. I guess that's at the state level?
Yes, ma'am.
So wherever this entity is going to call home, they're getting a quite, they're getting an incentive from the state to do that as well. So, you know, anytime we have an opportunity to bring jobs, good clean jobs to Pender County, I'm all for it. But I'm like Commissioner Peatmire, I, I don't like subsidizing entities, but it, but this entity seems to have gone beyond the pale in, in gathering up and making opportunistic application for grant monies and, and other funding, other than just from us. And I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us for expansion of an existing agribusiness here in Pender County. And I'm, I'm prepared for a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I don't, is there any action needed beyond this today? Do, so do you want to?
Well, Mr. Chairman, there aren't any sign-ups for this because it is a public hearing. But I think we just need to go ahead from the vote because I mean, we don't have a contract. If that hasn't been done, we'll have to bring that back as, as we get that.
Yeah, so I've noticed there's not a resolution on this item before, it's today, so I'm assuming we are going to need to wait on that contract to?
And Burgal to take action and us to get all the details from the state. But, but I think, I think, I think we should probably approve this pending Burgal approving there, so we don't, so we're ready. I mean, it's chicken or the egg and as I understand it to be, if we can approve this and as long as it's worded according to what we've said, said in public hearing and what's worded here, can't you just present it and the chairman sign it whenever it comes back? Burgal's waiting on us or, or, you know, can't we just approve it pending?
Can't we make a motion of support?
We can, we can make a motion to approve pending the attorney looking at the contract and getting back with the board with anything that he may have a problem with.
Yes, sir. Okay, I mean, because I don't want to sit here and wait another two weeks.
No, no, no. Okay. Well, I think we can work in that direction if that's okay.
If that's acceptable, then, then that's my motion. Exactly how you just worded it, would, would the attorney agree?
You got that?
He's got to say it again.
Real fast.
I've got the motion. I'm waiting on a second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor. Vote is unanimous. Thank you, folks. We'll close the public hearing and move on to the next item, which is public information update on the Pender County courthouse for mediation and repairs. Mr. Van.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow board members. In the audience, we have Mr. Charles Bonney, architect, as well as Patrick Watkins and Andrew Gerard with Thomas Construction to field any questions you may have later. But at this time, I'd like to ask Andrew Gerard to come up, the project manager. He's going to provide the update. But I'd also like to go ahead and mention a few things that he will get into with more detail or greater detail. The project has gone, I believe, to this point, it has gone extremely well to be dealing with an old building and all that you, you find along the way as far as surprises that have to be worked through. And so in that respect, it's gone very well. I would say that presently, the final completion date is scheduled for January twenty-sixth. However, we are hitting a snag with the doors, the door manufacturer, and that is a critical path item for the project, meaning that it will create delays by not being able to get it in. And Andrew with Thomas is working on vetting that as far as what that means in order to be able to come back to the board for consideration of extension of the, the time on the contract. But he will elaborate further on that. As far as the door manufacturer, we're being told that, of course, there's a lot of blaming things on COVID and the pandemic. We, we hear a lot from different things, but in this case, the situation is the plant has actually had one closing due to COVID at, at one point in time. And as well, they're not operating at full capacity as they typically would outside of the pandemic.
So, Mr. Van, is there not another supplier of doors to, to attempt to procure this from?
There may be, but this order has already been placed with this particular door manufacturer.
I understand that, but if they can't deliver to the schedule that we have set up, this is a pretty big project. We should have alternate suppliers that we should be pursuing if, if this is going to throw us into not being able to deliver per our schedule. I mean, that's how you run every other project.
We can review other alternatives. Wood doors that are fire rated always carry a substantial lead time, so we can talk to our subcontractors, see if there are any alternative vendors to go to. But either if we change the process now and go to a different vendor that has not been associated with this project to begin with, it may add even more time.
But at least we, we will know, because case in point, I just received an order last week that the specs were kind of written around my competition, but my competition could not deliver. And the job turned around and came back to us because we could deliver, because the engineer, the engineering company and the project manager went out and checked with me. So, and I'm with Commissioner Peatmire, if you don't ask, you don't know. I understand what you're saying. These aren't everyday, you know, subdivision house type doors, but I'd, I'd like to have that answer and I know he would too.
How much will it delay the project?
As of right now, we're tracking around about four weeks out of the original completion date of January twenty-sixth.
I do, I do know, sorry. I do know as well, Andrew, you had mentioned to me about the fact that the, originally when the asbestos abatement took a month longer, there were areas, situations related to the fire rating.
Essentially, as we all know, the abatement process took about a month longer than originally planned with existing conditions. This, we were not allowed to go into the building to verify any of the existing conditions while the abatement process was going on, so this is one of the effects of that delay associated with the existing conditions of the Mastic. This is partially related to the.
Why were we not allowed to go in and verify?
It's sealed up when, when they were doing the abatement process. No one's allowed to enter unless they're part of that company doing the, the Mastic abatement with the proper PPE. So only the demolition contractor with the correct PPE was going into the building at that time.
I, I got all that. I mean, that, that, that really at this point doesn't matter, because if we've got an issue, I, I think, but I would like to hear what probably the rest of the board would like to hear is we've explored all options. And, and I'm not hearing that, so I, I mean, I, I understand all that other stuff, but that doesn't, all that doesn't matter. What matters is what are we doing now moving forward? And just cross it off your list, but if we can't do it, but at least we, we, we asked.
When did we, when did we find out about this? When did we realize we, we had a problem there?
I guess we talked, we, we were concerned that it would be a problem as much as, what, three weeks ago, maybe?
I'd say three weeks ago to a month ago.
Yeah, and.
Not to try to beat anybody up, but if we knew three weeks ago, wouldn't kind of common sense tell you to, let's look at alternative sources to have for the board as options? Wouldn't that have been a direction we could have looked at? I mean, I, I sound like me, it's just these delays, here we are talking about late February now or mid February. You know, that is if we don't have any other problems. So I, I heard everything you said. I've heard what these folks have had to say, but I just think there are options out there as far as other manufacturers we could probably reach out to and get some kind of indication for that. And I realize they're going to have issues with getting an order this late. I know that. But I'd at least like to find out, like to hear as they have said, that we did reach out and make that effort.
Well, I do want to mention as well, when you mentioned other potential delays, at the moment, the critical path item is the doors and not the situation with JurisLink. However, JurisLink.
I wasn't even thinking about JurisLink.
But I, I feel that it's important.
We can operate the courthouse without JurisLink. That, that's, that should be a critical path item for opening the courthouse to business.
Sure.
Okay, do we have, do we have some kind of?
He was going to give the update, yes, sir.
Let's go ahead and go with that.
And I'll follow up to see if there are any alternatives.
You know, we also need to look ahead and make sure there, our risk register should identify anything like this. I understand that COVID has an impact, but, but at the same time, we gotta, we gotta be looking around the corner so that you're not surprising us, because this is a severe cost impact. When we delay this, we, we have to extend the current situation that we're already paying for additional locations to do all the things that the courthouse does for us on a daily basis. And it's very, very pricey, okay? So I, I, I appreciate you telling us, but you need to come with solutions and we need to be looking around the corner to see what other things could bite us in the butt, because we really need to get back in this courthouse.
Understood.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, going to the regular planned update. Completed activities, we recently installed the ATS on site. Duke Energy has come out and replaced the transformer for the new load we're going to be having with the building. Waterproofing its walls has been completed. Elevator shaft has been completed as well with the bar joists supporting. Current activities, interior framing, MVP roughing is ongoing, drywall finishing and door frame installation. Future activities, we're replacing the courtroom boots and registers. Existing plaster repair is going to follow that. After we get the plaster repaired, the courtroom ceiling, we're going to have the sprayed installation, followed by in-wall inspections, installation of the elevator, which is slated for end of this month to start, and hang taping and finish the drywall. Alan and I talked earlier, the door frames and hardware seem to be a potential impact right now with the project. We'll follow up with an update on this. Project update.
One slide, please, just one second. My question would be, when were the doors ordered? What was the BO lead time and are they in breach of any agreement that we made with them? So I'd like to know that, Mr. Van.
We'll follow up with these as an order.
If they've got liquidated damages tied to them, then they're probably going to do the same thing like act the god of the storm and the pandemic will probably, probably make all that, any kind of, anything like that and all avoid, but that's a good question.
And then we'll deal with that later.
I've been on both sides of, of that, sorry before. Excuse me, sorry.
Going to budget. Total budget's four five five oh, four three nine. We are currently under budget. We're about fifty percent done with buildings to date.
So the exterior is a hundred percent done or not?
The exterior.
The exterior part of the project.
Utilities are not a hundred percent complete now.
Are you talking about the exterior repair done by stone restoration, the brick and mortar?
Talking about the exterior was supposed to be done, whatever we contracted for in that initial phase, is that all done? Is that all completed?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
What about the exterior with regards to the, the log and drainage issues, because I saw a lot of, of earth moving going on lately.
Yes, so two things are being discussed right now. The exterior that Mr. Peatmire is talking about was stone restoration. I believe they've completed their work to their contract. What you're referring to is part of the site utility upgrade. That, that work is ongoing as part of our contract.
Will it be finished?
I would say, I mean, I, their, their portion of the scope would include the exterior drainage and they're installing a new ADA ramp. I'd say they'd be complete with everything by December, mid-December.
Where's the new ADA ramp going?
It's going on the south side of the building.
Then where the concrete driveway is that law enforcement uses?
So they'll have one on each end?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
No, just understand our frustration. We, this has been going on for a long time for us, so we're, we're ready to get back in the courthouse.
Understood.
Okay, thank you, folks. We appreciate it.
I have one, one last question. Mr. Van, does our contract include an industrial hygienist certifying that that building is fit to occupy? Have we already made consideration of the need for that to occur?
I thought that was going to be through the state from the, from the.
I'm trying to recall, because do you remember, Andrew? I know, Mr. Bonney, do you mind coming up, speaking to that? I know we had conversa- I know we had conversations and.
So we need to get that, if it's not in place.
We had a conversation with regard to the asbestos certification, and that's been done. We've had the cleanliness of that. I do need to look back into the issue of the industrial hygienist, or discussing that from where we left it.
Yeah, so, if you would, taking action, we need to get on that so that that's not holding us from allowing our personnel to go back into that building. We need to make sure that we, we have something that declares independently that that building is able, you know, all hazards have been resolved and it's fit for occupancy from, from an industrial hygienist viewpoint. So if we got to, if we got to place a PO for that, we need to place a PO for that. But something needs to be in place. I don't know if the health department can help us with something like that, or if we have to go down to independent contractors, whatever. But we need to have that discussion, Chad and I'm looking at you too.
Just in case some hypothetically speak.
Yeah, we just want to make sure.
Some official says one day, you know, I'm never going back in that building, it'll never be safe. Then we can, as I'm just hypothetically speaking, not that.
Well, we don't want to put the public in there either.
Yeah, so, you know, but, but we can tell that person, we want you to resign your position or go back in there to go to work. So, but not that that's ever happened, just hypothetically speaking, of course, when we.
We, we've discussed it in the past, I don't know if it's in the existing contract, but we, Alan and I have talked about, that is definitely something we're going to have in hand when, whenever that CEO or conditional CEO is issued for that bill.
Yes.
That's part of our due diligence process of opening it back up.
Yes, so let's get on that now to get whatever instrument in place so that process is, is completed and we can all say, point to a piece of paper and say this building is, 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 is good to go. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, folks. We're at the point of public comment, Mr. Attorney, do we have any signups?
No signups, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Clerk, do you, did we have any online questions? Okay. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda, if everyone's had a chance to look at it. We'll entertain a motion when you're ready.
I should go first.
Second.
All those in favor? Vote is unanimous, thank you. First item under approvals and resolution is for a budget ordinance amendment contract and associated purchase order with CDM Smith for engineering services. Mr. Keel.
So this item was tabled from our last meeting, there was a few contract language issues to be worked out that I believe we've gotten all worked out. And Trey, what you had mentioned to me earlier, the section five point seven covers like controlling law in that agreement. So I, I think all of that is, meets what your concerns were.
No.
That, that's not enough?
No.
Okay, so that other section basically needs to state in Pender County as well.
Well, and we'll, we'll address it. There's minor things that North Carolina requires for all local government contracts that the contractor expressly provide that they will use the eVerify for any of their personnel that works on it, which basically means everyone is either a citizen or authorized to work in the United States through the eVerify program. And that has to expressly be stated in the contract.
Yeah, and whether, and that I have, that is not in the copy before you, but it has been added in to the signature page that the chairman would be signing if this gets agreed.
Are you talking about item five point seven?
Well, we're apparently talking about two different things. The eVerify statement is on the signature page now of what will be the final document. That was not in what was presented for you, the eVerify statement. And so, we have put that in there, that's, CDM is fine with that, and, and they comply with that.
See, I need, I need the attorney to see this stuff before it's put in my folder for me to sign.
Well, and, and again, this apparently was different than what was provided previously.
And having gone through this last meeting, I thought that we had postponed it and tabled it to give everyone an opportunity to meet and vet the contract. And, and just, just for future purposes, Mr. Manager, this may be my last meeting, but if, if I were on the board, I would recommend that we not vote on anything, any contract other than the final contract. I think that's bad business and a slippery slope.
Well, and, and I do believe that if the eVerify has been put in there, that was the only thing that we, because we had a, I think it's fair to say lengthy conference call with Chad, Mr. Keel, myself, various people from CDM, Reed is here, some other folks that I don't think are here, were also in part of the call. And I think we reached resolution on everything that we discussed, and the rest of it was reflected other than the eVerify portion.
Okay, is it in there?
If you will give me just one second, I'll be sure that it is.
So if I was inclined to make a motion, if the chairman was inclined to take a motion, it'd probably be best bet to mention the eVerify because it wasn't in what was on the agenda then.
Well, and, and let me.
Just for to clear, just to make sure we're clear, crystal clear?
Well, and actually, Commissioner Williams, the version that came out of our discussion did not make it in the agenda package because I don't think we got it until last Thursday.
Right, right, it was sent out separately.
It was emailed out to you, so it would, it, it does need to reflect that it's not the version that was included in the agenda package. So that there's no question later on about what got signed, it is the version that is ref, that's referenced here.
Which is the reason we delayed it the other, the last meeting, was because we needed the one section corrected.
Well, we, and, and that was taken care of, and we also worked out.
And reviewed and approved by counsel, both sides.
That, in, having discussions with CDM, we did not want to risk that should, and we do not believe it will be the case, but should, there be a lot of wetlands out there. And we not go ahead with the purchase, or the seller not want to go ahead with the sale, that we had spent a lot of design work that could potentially be wasted money. And so we adjusted the schedule so that that, that, most of that work doesn't get, we give them separate go-ahead for that. We do some of the preliminary work, but we, they don't do the, like, the, the design of the RO plan itself because they tell me that it's sort of like Michelangelo when he carved David, there's this ideal of an RO plant. They're not just taking it off the shelf and stamping a new name on it, like some people might think they do. They, they come up with some very unique design. But, all that being said, they said that there would be engineering fees that would be lost if we had to move to a different site.
Yeah, okay.
And so, we don't want to start incurring too much of that until, we'll, we'll have an idea on the wetlands pretty early on. And so we'll, we'll stay in communication with the board on that about when we say go. And so that also is an adjustment to the contract. And again, both sides were amenable to that, although it made sense, you know, they don't want to, they don't want us mad with them because they're going to have to charge us twice. That, that, that doesn't do either side any good. So they, we worked that out, they completely deleted the limitation on liability. So, again, the, but yes, if, if someone were to make a motion to approve, it needs to be the version that incorporates all the changes, including the eVerify that's been added at the bottom of the signature.
Is that the same thing that was sent to us by email?
Yes, everything except for that simple eVerify statement on the signature page.
But that's what, he's holding.
And Trey's got.
I know what, what he's holding is the correct document, but is that the same document we saw?
Yes.
Sounds like you, it's got the eVerify information in it that, that the one you sent us did not have.
Right, the one you, one I sent did not have that eVerify statement on the signature page. That's the only difference in what he is holding. Because I realized that this afternoon, that we didn't have the eVerify statement, I want to make sure that was in there. And so I incorporated that, made sure CDM was aware of it.
Let me stop everybody right here. I have said this time and time again, I'm tired of saying it. If you want me to sign something, let it be what we're voting on verbatim, and that that man over there has seen it and approved it and given me the green light to sign it. I don't like this. This is, this causes delays.
You want to say this, A class?
No, I'm, I do.
Not you.
I do.
Yeah.
So what you got in your hand, what I got in my hand? Okay, so what I got in my hand, you, you want us to consider for adoption? You're, you're okay with us considering this as it's written? This copy?
Yes, sir.
From a legal standpoint?
Yes, sir.
And it is what was emailed, what, Thursday or Friday? It's what was emailed Thursday or Friday, the only change being.
They added.
EVerify.
Right.
Because I've seen that, okay, so, but, but. But when, when folks watching and folks go back and see the minutes, they go, oh, we're voting on something that's not on the agenda.
Yeah, and, and eVerify is.
Does not sound good, and it makes us look kind of foolish if you.
Are you finished with this?
Yes, sir, and, and let me say, it, it's similar to if there's not a pre-oral statement, sometimes that comes in and it has to be added. And it gets signed after the fact, but it's a, and, I mean, CDM works on enough government projects that they have to eVerify all the time. So, you know, that, that's a, it's, it's not a big deal that anybody was trying to play in the game.
But to Mr. Williams' point, this, this matter was on the agenda at our last meeting. It is not on the agenda this meeting, and.
This is, it was tabled and brought forward to item nine point one.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay.
And I can't help you.
I don't want to make a big thing out of a small thing, I just, but this, we need to make sure when it gets here for signature, he's seen that latest copy, that's all I'm asking.
Not only for signature, for our consideration, it should be, it should be where it's very easy for us to, to get through this matter without all this discussion. That's my view.
Because we went, we went through, you know, we've gone through this and, and it just, it's not, it's, it's not nice and even to me.
Okay.
It gives you the appearance that we really hadn't put a whole hell of a lot of thought into it.
We have, though.
Well, I know we have, okay? So, I mean, it's just the little things and it, you know, it can lead to doubt.
I'll entertain a motion to approve this item with the changes the attorney has just approved of, this final copy.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Vote is unanimous, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item nine point two has been removed, item nine point three, approval of a contract for demolition services for HMGP Hurricane Matthew, and, oh, we got one, yeah, I saw that today. We have one Matthew in that list, and what, eleven from Florence?
Yes, one from the Hurricane Matthew program, and that's, if you look on the third page.
I know they're happy.
Well, it's taken a long time, but we're finally there.
Well, actually, they've already received their money, probably have it, yeah.
They have.
This is just about the demolition.
Right, but this coming forward means that they've recently received their money as well. So, as the chairman mentioned, one through the Hurricane Matthew HMG program, the other eleven is the first round of the HMGP Florence expedited acquisition program. Went through the sealed bid process, received three bids. Satterfield site works Wilmington was found as the lowest responsible bidder by quite some margin. And as everything else with the HMGP programs, this is a fully reimbursable expense paid for primarily by the federal government and also by state funds. I do want to be clear, since there's a contract discussion, that this is the award, not the contract itself. In the past, for these programs, the, the board has approved the award and the contracts have been worked out between staff and the attorney. But should the board want to see the demo contract, we can certainly bring that forward.
All right, does anyone have any questions for staff on this item?
I'm just happy for these people to get closure, but there's still plenty more to add, but this is, this is progress.
Next step is lease it out, right?
Yes, sir. And there's more coming.
We'll entertain a motion.
Motion should we approve it?
Need a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Vote is unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Satterfield, is it?
I don't think so.
I think he's got a cool place.
Okay.
He's checking.
Okay, it looks like the next item. Being approval of the sale of real property. Morgan Cove surplus property. Mr. Manager, you want to?
Yes, sir. If you'll recall, we've discussed some time back, a couple of properties in the Morgan Cove subdivision, Rock Point County had become the owner of through tax foreclosure. Two tracks in the neighborhood, they were unbillable due to their inability to obtain a improvement permit through Pender County Environmental Health. We have confirmed that with environmental health. And so, in, in an effort to clear, so to speak, the county's books in terms of property that we don't need or have a long-term beneficial, beneficial use for, the commissioner surplused it and ordered a sealed bid process advertisement for bids on October one in the Pender Post with a deadline of submittal of October fifteenth. We only received one bid, and we stated in that that the two tracks had a minimum bid of twelve thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and twelve thousand and sixty-one dollars respectively. The two properties received one bid each, like I said, from Nathan Coleman, and Mr. Coleman submitted a bid of fifteen thousand two hundred and eleven dollars each for the property. So essentially, three thousand dollars more than our minimum bid. The recommendation is to pursue the sale to Mr. Coleman based on the, the bid of the two parcels listed in your packet.
So, the, the minimum bid was based on the tax owed on the property, correct?
Correct, yes.
Do we know what the value of that property is by chance?
No.
I realize by the fact that it won't perk, that it can't have much value to it, so.
Yeah, it, we, we asked the tax office for, for essentially the, the owed amount in terms of tax, and that was the basis for the minimum.
Okay, I get it, I, I.
You can't bill on that property, Ron, you can't bill on that.
Can't improve it.
That's, that's pretty good.
And that's the only bill we got, so it's, the board.
What's a tax valuable property?
Oh, I don't think they provided that with this.
When we checked with the tax office, it was right around thirty, but of course, that, it was not taken into consideration.
Did it?
Couldn't improve it.
It, it considered it an approvable lot because that information from environmental health, I guess, doesn't get conveyed to the tax office in terms of the value of the property, particularly since we, we owned it through tax foreclosure. So, I, I would say the value would be negligible in, in the middle of the neighborhood.
I mean, the, the other thing is, what environmental health can say is it won't perk.
Right.
That doesn't mean that you couldn't use a mound system or some alternative, but those are costly. So it could, I mean, those, I think, start at ten thousand dollars, I mean, so.
Reparations could be made to the property.
But, I mean, you would spend quite a bit, so if it's thirty, it might very well be if you knock out the ten to fifteen, it's going to take you to get a mound system, and.
That's with the pump and everything.
Right, and then, right, and it's, you maintain it and.
You're right back up there.
Right, you have to get an engineer to design it, so that, that would, again, I'd say, yeah, that, that number might very well make sense in terms of where it goes.
Well, another thing, it, it had become a liability to the county because we were getting complaints about the condition of it in the middle of the neighborhood, understandably so, it was overgrown. Quite honestly, we didn't know that we, we owned it until it brought our attention that we actually did own it. So, just doing our, our, our best to be a good neighbor, so to speak, in the neighborhood, we wanted to get it, get it back in private hands.
And we tasked staff with bringing stuff to us that we somehow got through these foreclosures dating back.
Yep.
Who knows how long, so I, I'm comfortable with this.
All right, so.
Motion to accept.
There you go. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Vote is unanimous, thank you, folks. Our next item is Pender County Board of Health. We have anything you want to give us, COVID update? Okay. Do you have that document for Wes? Did you get a chance to look at most of it? Okay.
No, I, I got all of it, I did them in chat, it's all.
Okay, so, North Carolina is now releasing a weekly report from the White House Task Force in Washington for states that have municipalities, counties, and areas that are categorized as red zones. North Carolina is in the red zone for cases indicating a hundred and one or more new cases per one hundred thousand population last week, with the twenty-fifth highest rate in the country. North Carolina is in the yellow zone. North Carolina is in the yellow zone for test positivity and ki- indicating a rate between five percent and seven point nine percent with a twenty-eighth highest in the country. We have seen in North Carolina stability in new cases and, um, and test positivity over the last week. Mecklenburg, Wake and Guilford counties have had the highest number of cases over the last three weeks and these three counties represent eighteen point two percent of the new cases in North Carolina. As of today, the state is at six point two percent, um, test positivity and we are at ten point six percent and we are actually a little bit down from last week when we were eleven point two. Um, as of today, North Carolina has roughly two hundred and seventy-eight thousand cases, forty-three hundred deaths and eleven hundred hospitalized. We have fourteen hundred and nineteen cases as of today, eleven hundred of those have recovered. We have seventeen deaths, we had two more over the weekend and we currently have six hospitalized. Fourteen hundred is a lot, but when you look at the surrounding counties, we are the lowest. Um, Columbus has seventeen hundred, Duplin has twenty-eight, Brunswick has twenty-two, Onslow has over thirty-five hundred and Hanover has over fifty-four hundred. And so, uh, we are, like I said, substantially lower, it's even about three hundred lower than Columbus. And of course, Hampstead still has the lead for the most positive cases. Pender Correctional is really bumping our numbers up, um, they've got to date a hundred ninety-three positive cases that we've actually reported, but we're expecting thirty-nine more positives to be added tomorrow, so that's going to put us at about two hundred and thirty-two positive cases in Pender Correctional and we've actually had four deaths there. Um, last week, we received updated guidance on social gatherings and get-togethers and who should be tested, um, that's pretty much, it didn't really change a lot. Um, also Carolyn listened in on a call about COVID prevention and enforcement focused on the authority of, of DHHS and what local health departments can do, especially about, you know, we have so many reports about, um, restaurants who are not wearing, staff are not wearing their masks. And what local health departments can do is provide education, conduct site visits, refer to law enforcement, issue an abatement order and refer to the state for further measures if, if something is totally out of hand. In our congregate settings, in our nursing homes, in Pender County Long Term Care Facilities, um, we have three out of our five largest facilities actually have cases. Luckily, most have been work, workers and we're very fortunate that we've not had any deaths in our residents so far. And then I'm sure most of you know that, um, the schools will go to four days a week starting next week. Any questions?
No questions, okay, um, I guess saying thank you for all the work you all are involved in is kind of an understatement, um.
And it's, and it never stops.
Because I was just sitting there listening to what, um, the, the local health departments have the authority to do and I'm like, uh, okay, that's more people we need to go in and perform those functions, so anyhow, tell, tell your staff we said thank you. I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but we know they're going through a little trouble over there, I mean, it's, it's, it's day and night and seven days a week and, and, and I know they got to be exhausted, so.
We are.
We appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Wes, we got anything from? Okay.
I have a question for Wes. For social services. What are we doing about home visits for, for children at risk in, in this time of COVID?
We've been back visiting, well, we've never really stopped visiting from any calls that came in, but visiting for foster children and all of that kind of stuff, we've been doing since the first of August. So we've gone back, we're not doing any telework, tele-visits, uh, which were allowed for a period, so we're, we're back doing face-to-face visits. We've got some protocols in place to, to protect staff and, uh, families that we're dealing with, so, we're, we are doing face-to-face visits.
What are those protocols?
Uh, it's basically just the, the questions that are asked, we're check, we're checking temperature going in, we're asking questions about, have they been in contact, are they experiencing COVID symptoms, those kinds of things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. Okay, it's that time of the evening for, um, items from the county attorney, manager, assistant county manager and county commissioner, so we'll start with the attorney.
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman, um, uh, we've got some items for closed session, uh, under number three, attorney-client privilege and item four, uh, economic development. Uh, and I, if with the board's indulgence, I'm going to pinch-hit for our elections director, Ms. Williams, because the board of elections started meeting at, uh, same time we did today at four, uh, to count any mail-in ballots that had come in since their last meeting, uh, and they wanted to be sure they had time so that they will have counted every ballot. By the time they're finished with their meeting today, they will have counted every ballot that has come in through five P M. today, because people could drop off absentee, absentee ballots a- a- at the elections office or at one-stop places and so they want to be sure they were there to have all of those counted, so they will be ready to go. They will also be meeting, uh, starting at two tomorrow to take care of any ballots that come in tomorrow and so that they are ready, um, to be able to report. And, uh, Ms. Williams had shared with the board and the manager, um, but we have had very heavy, uh, one-stop and mail-in balloting, uh, by way of compare, and it's actually, the state is a little different than some of the numbers, but it's somewhere north of sixty-four percent, one is sixty-four point two.
As of now.
Sixty-four point nine of the mail-in, I mean, the, excuse me, the, the, the mail ballots and the one-stop ballots that had been received, um, as of close on Saturday, uh, which the poll, one-stop stopped at three P M. on Saturday, uh, was, again, in the sixty-four percent range. The total vote in twenty sixteen, which is a very heavy year, we exceeded the state average, was just, it was zero point, it was sixty-nine point nine, uh, eight, uh, percent, so right at seventy percent. So basically, we were within six percent already of the total vote from twenty sixteen. So, uh, frankly, the lines may not be as bad tomorrow as they were at some of the, the, the one-stop spots. Um, but the, the, the numbers are there. Uh, also, I wanted to address, and I, Commissioner McCoy, I followed up on the question you had asked about, if the last one, how long would it take them to count? Ms. Williams reiterated that every ballot that has been received by their office as of five P M. or is cast tomorrow before the polls close at seven thirty P M. will be reported before she leaves that office tomorrow night or early Wednesday morning, whenever that is. Uh, so they are, and they, they are committed to getting that done. Um, the state board of elections estimates that, uh, ninety-seven percent of all ballots will be counted by tomorrow, by when the elections office are done. Now, some places may not have been as diligent as our board has in keeping up, they've been meeting every week and taking care of mail ballots to go along, uh, so that is being done. Um, the, for the reporting timeline, uh, again, polls close at seven thirty and all the mail and, as of five P M. today and the one-stop ballots, they're ready to press the button on and send to the state at seven thirty. They'll, they'll wait a little bit, the state does not release those numbers immediately, uh, because there may be people waiting in line to vote and they don't want to discourage anybody from voting that is there, so they wait until they're sure everybody, because anybody's in line at seven thirty gets to vote, so they wait for that. So sometime between eight and eight-thirty probably would be the first time to expect those, but even though they're all counted and ready, eight to eight-thirty is probably the earliest that you could expect to see anything, with a caveat, uh, that I had frankly forgotten about. If there is a delay in a precinct, the state board of elections can extend voting, you know, if the power goes off. There, there are places in the Piedmont that still have some kind of iffy power from the Zeta. Uh, and so if they delay that, then they delay the entire state reporting for the amount of time that they allowed that, that one precinct. One between Murphy and Manio, then they delay it, the entire state for, to, in equal number of minutes. If they say, okay, you've got an extra thirty minutes, then it's an extra thirty minutes before they release anything. So again, if, if, if you don't see it, what I, and this is much more for the people in the community, no, nobody needs to panic. It's not that there's anything wrong, it's just that, again, they could have extended it in, you know, gr- thirty minutes for one precinct in Greensboro and the entire state gets delayed thirty minutes. Uh, so that will be, and then the precincts will come in, you all are familiar with it, but so again, the people understand, the they take, they physically take, we have people that are set up to be runners and they go from poll, you know, typically several polling places and pick up the voting data and physically transport, they do, that's for security, that way it's not, it, there's no email that can get intercepted, stolen, any of that, somebody physically hands it in and they run it through the computers and then they report it and the state board updates every five to ten minutes. Uh, so, and if anybody wants to look, monitor that, uh, the website for the state is, it's a, uh, North Carolina State Board of Elections, so it's NCSBE.gov and you go there and they have, you can get all the details you want.
And the Pender County Board of Elections should have a hot scroll or something or link, you know.
Well, they send their stuff through the state.
I know, but it still shouldn't send you to the link somehow on our way.
Yes, no, they, they, they absolutely do, but I'm just saying that it, they don't maintain their separate, because it's a, right. And, and also just, you know, there may be differences in what the A P. reports and what, uh, the official state numbers are. For anybody that's listening, go with the state numbers, because sometimes the A P. transposes something. I, in fact, I had a case with a judge who thought he had been elected to the Court of Appeals based on the A P. reporting. He hadn't, because they had mis, misreported Mecklenburg County and so he thought he had a lot more votes than he did, uh, and so.
Just get it first, don't have to be correct, right?
Right, that, yeah, no, again, that, that's a, and the state very much takes the opposite approach of, they want to be sure it's right, so, um, one final thing that I clarified, because I had a friend actually asked me this, the people that have used mail, there's a way you can track to see if your ballot has arrived. And speaking with Ms. Williams, that is not, there's a time lag there. If you check the site and don't see that your ballot has been received and you ma- now, if you mailed it, you know, if you stick it in the mail tomorrow, don't call her and ask her if it got, you know, if you mailed it Saturday or even Friday, don't. But if you can call our board of elections and say, hey, I don't see that my ballot has arrived and they can check and say, yes, it has or no, it hasn't. And if it hasn't and you're worried that it's been lost, depending on how long it's been, they can mark it so that that will be spoiled if it does arrive and you can vote in person. But you need to call them and let them know that before, because if you don't, it's a felony. So I would not advise somebody just saying, well, I don't, it, it's been ten days, it must be lost. Don't take that chance, call them, they'll be happy to help you and you'll know, and if it's bad, then you can, you, you can show up and vote in person that way. So again, just, this is all much more for the, the people out there, uh, just so they know.
Just to be clear, the double voting is a felony, not the fact of not reporting that you don't think?
Oh, absolutely, no, it would be double voting, yes, sir, no, if I was, if I was not clear, I apologize, no, 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 that is.
I knew what you meant, but I, somewhere, somebody was, you know, like, they said, president said you need to drink something, you know.
No, 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 and I was not getting at all political, that's just, I, I was trying to help people that might be worried that their ballot hasn't been received and, again, it's not, and it the tracker is not run by our board of elections, it's through the state and it is slow. And Ms. Williams actually had gotten a call from somebody today and she pulled it and said, no, your ballot's here and we've recorded, I don't know why the state didn't show and that it's here. Yes, it's here and it's been processed, so it, they can help people with that.
Because they track it by the barcode that's on each ballot and each mail-in ballot.
And, again, for whatever reason, it didn't make it into the system, so.
So they're on top of it pretty well, a little.
And that was all, Ms. Chairman, I just wanted to try to give it up.
Hey, Chairman, I appreciate you giving the mic.
Thank you, Trey. So you, you've got all the numbers for closed session?
Yes, just, just three, four.
You got anything?
Nothing for open session.
Alan?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to, uh, give a kudos to our tourism department with an assist from Parks and Recreation. Uh, they were still able to put on a modified ghost walk event last week, uh, they sold out both showings, uh, two nights, one night was in Berga and one night was in Hampstead, so thank you for keeping that going.
I just want to, um, I've had occasion several times to meet, uh, with Ms. Williams, uh, and her staff over at the Board of Elections and I just wanted to say that I think they're doing a fantastic job and, um, Susan, Ms. Williams especially, has gone above and beyond, um, for this election cycle and, and I'm grateful that we have her, uh, here, so.
Just seeing those.
And just for clarification, that's not my wife, Ms. Williams, uh, I don't think that we're related in any way that I'm aware of, but, you know, hey, we got the same last name, but.
I'm so glad you put our minds at rest with that.
I agree, I agree with what you said, though, so.
I just want to, yeah, echo what, um, Jack said about the Board of Elections and her director, she's doing a fantastic job. I just want to say, I think Chad a few weeks ago posted on our email about the county had a credit rating now of double A E, something we really be proud of and it shows we have a sound financial situation in the county, so that's really going to help us when we have to borrow money or school bond whatever we have to sell, so that's really good news.
Yes, sir, thank you, that, and while we're giving kudos, um, Meg and Finance Office, um, did a phenomenal job balancing the demands. I, I'd not, I'd been through refinancing, but I'd never been through a refunding process with bonds, had no idea, and I don't know if Meg did either, the amount of time-consuming paperwork that that refunding was going to take and as Murphy's Law exists, it came right in the middle of all of it. Um, and field work and all those requirements, so, um, Meg and, and folks in finance did an excellent job.
She's doing a magnificent job with that.
But we saved quite a bit of money with those.
Millions and billions of dollars from that refinance.
How much, a total?
Uh, it, what was the final number, five? Yeah, it, it, it fluctuated there towards the end, it went from six, six down to five, but.
Yeah, that's still not.
Nothing to blink at, yes, sir.
All right.
I'm good, I'm good.
Going to end on all positives except those of you two down there, good luck, good luck tomorrow, I hope you, hope you get some good sleep tomorrow night and, uh, I, you know, I, I just want to end on something positive, I got some trick, trick-or-treaters, my wife and I sat out front and she helped us set some together and it, it almost seemed, you know, Saturday night, things just seemed like good old normal America to me, you know, I went to bed that night going, man, that was cool. Nobody gave a you-know-what about who was what, the parents coming up for the kids and my big old lab out there licking everybody and wagging his tail. Of course, you got to lock the little dog up, they think they're around by it, and that's how. So, I mean, but, you know, it's just, it was just something simple that just made me feel good, I'm like, man, I needed that.
I feel really good that when it's over, because you're out constantly checking your signs and everything and meeting people, that's really, I enjoy that, but, uh, it's a lot of stress on them. That's better, we look forward to the day when the votes are counted.
I thought you were going to talk about Halloween, how about you enjoyed it?
I thought you were going to tell us how much you got. Is that it?
Yeah, just about, we, um.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, it's all right, I don't have anything important, it's just, I've, I've appreciated the job that Ms. Williams has done too, and I've been watching the, uh, the emails she's been sending and it's keeping us updated on things and, uh, I appreciated that. I hope, I'm going to end this by saying, I hope the rest of the country can have fair and honest elections like I think Pender County does. I hope, whatever the case is, as you prayed earlier, that people come together come Wednesday as Americans and realize this is, this is the place where we can do this, I just hope it's an honest election. So with that being said, we'll entertain a motion for one in the closed session.
Ms. Chairman, I believe that we go into closed session for item three, attorney-client privilege, item number four, economic development, and just glad we don't have to go in for any kind of personnel matters.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, we're in closed session, thank you, folks.